Call to order the August 7, 2012 work session, Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. A couple of items on our agenda, Mr. Febo.
First item is Stan Reagan's here to update us on the five-year plan. And I think Stan, see, there he is. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. The solid waste management plan is something that we have to update every five years. Solid waste management planning has been around since 1990. That was when the first plan came to fruition in Warren County. And the city and county worked together to create one solid waste management planning authority and let the county be that. Bowling Green has input on that any time they would like. Every five years, we go through this planning process, modify our plan. Sometimes we have to make amendments to it because of things as simple as Monarch Environmental moving across the road to a new transfer station. But that kind of stuff happens. The plan that I've submitted, or it's up for actually a 30-day open comment period right now through the end of the month, is basically the same plan as we had for the last five years with some minor modifications, but they may not be so minor to some people. The things that principally have changed about this plan is that the county is going to begin getting the waste wood haulers to register just as any solid waste hauler would. That way, we have some type of way to identify where they're taking their loads and what they're doing with them, if it's being disposed of properly. It also lets us communicate with them on a more consistent level about proper disposal. We've had that problem in the past. You may recall of tree trimmers that go and trim trees from a homeowner's property and then put all the waste out for the trash service to collect. And it's really not their responsibility to remove that after another contractor has handled it. And that's one of the things that we'll be pushing for and make it a matter-of-fact thing, probably beginning of next year, actually. Also, the disposal sites that we might identify through this process that are out there, we'll be looking at how to mitigate those, whether they need to be shut down and disposed of through intensive means or something as simple as reapplication through land processes. But that may be a process that will involve having a property rezoned if a business wants to continue reusing that. Conditional use permit process and zoning process are all in place for that. Essentially, the one thing we really want to keep an eye on as we grow over these next five to 20 years is the amount of population growth, because with that comes a ton of garbage for every person that comes into the community. And it looks like, according to the census estimates and the solid waste disposal rates, we'll probably double our solid waste disposal every five years. So recycling and all that becomes all the more important as we go. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
Questions, Mr. Reagan? This will be for a five-year period, and it'll be on the next agenda, is that correct?
Yeah, you have a... Can you go through the procedural parts of it, please?
Okay. Procedure that we have in solid waste management plans, there's a 30-day open comment period, which we began August 1st with the advertisement in the local newspaper. That'll end at August 30th. And then September 7th, we'll have a first reading at fiscal court on an ordinance and a resolution to accept the solid waste plan and the area designation. That Warren County has to do one, and the city, we ask to do one as well, because you're a second-class city. And in some counties, second-class cities do their own solid waste management plans. And that's what we are looking at, is the beginning of that. Then, of course, two weeks later, we'll have the second reading on the ordinance and then eventually transmit that at the end of September to the Cabinet for Natural Resources, Environmental and Energy. Y'all changed the name on that lately, Joe? That's the process.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Anyone else? It's downstairs. And I'm sorry, it's in Katie's hands. All right. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention.
And if the plan's approved by the Cabinet, then it will take effect January 1 of 2013.
Let me stand just while, and I'll save a phone call. You're talking about the tree haulers, some of them dumping the debris other places. Someone called me in the last week and talked about dumping some debris at the Old Holly Trailer Park. Is that something that, if that happens, that you would be the person to call and would check into that?
We, anything in the city, we like to be aware of that, as well as we reciprocate with City Central and notify them as well, in case there's something, it may be a property owner that's facilitating that. But yes, please notify us of that, and if it's something that we can take care of through our means, we're more than happy to do that.
Okay. Have you been notified?
I had not.
I'm notifying you now.
I had not.
Or would you rather me go through City Central and do it that way?
I can take it from here.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. The next item is an item that I've placed on the work session agenda, which is a discussion on the applicability of the net profit license fee to our capital gains. Unless Mr. Febo or Mr. Mize will have anything to begin with, I'll go ahead and get started.
No.
And I asked for this to be put on the agenda to review a decision from the 2008 state standardization law, which interpreted, we have been interpreted to require the city to tax capital gains and losses. And there are several points we want to make, but I've got several guests here that will provide comments as well. From the outset, when the occupational license fee was created in the '60s, capital gains were not treated as business income by the city. We recognized the difference between business income and investment income even 50 years ago, and it was always treated in that manner, even though state law made no reference to it. When this was presented in 2008, we were told that this only minorly changes, excuse me, that there are only minor changes to penalties and late fees, and it was not given to us as a tax increase. And going back and looking at that presentation, the staff making the presentation said that, quote, "We are allowed home rules or tax rate and any exemptions we want to have. We've kept some of the ones that we've had for years," unquote. No mention was made of this major change in calculation. And then going back and reading the minutes of the meeting from February 5, 2008, it reads that the presentation outlined the process undertaken by the state to determine the standardized language. He noted that the most significant changes were to late fees and penalties; otherwise, there were no substantive changes." And that's the end of that quote. And my judgment, this calculation was clearly a substantive change. I felt like we should have been informed of that. It wasn't until later that year, when notice was sent out to local accounting firms that we had changed how we were preparing or considering capital gains and losses, that it was made, I was made aware of it. Since that time, we've had a couple of meetings about it, and staff continues with their interpretation that it is appropriate to include capital gains and losses as part of the calculation of our net profit license fee. I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with that interpretation, as are others in the community. And I've invited some who've interested in making comments to be here with us today. The first one I'll invite up is Steve Wheeler, a local CPA. Mr. Wheeler, if you would come up and make your presentation, if you would please. Thank you for coming.
Mayor, Commission, thank y'all. I appreciate your time and allowing us to come and address this issue. I'm not a public speaker, which will become apparent very shortly, but I do appreciate this opportunity to speak on this issue. It's been a troubling issue to us in the tax practice community for, since 2008. It does appear to me to disproportionately tax a few selected individuals in the community who invest capital into infrastructure in the community. I have been practicing in Bowling Green, Kentucky, as a tax preparer since 1971. And so a good part of the time that this tax has been imposed in the community, I have been filing returns and trying to interpret its rules and its application. When this adjustment was first proposed, certainly let me say that we agree with the concept of conformity. It's a burden on the taxpayer and preparers to deal with multiple different forms each year. So a simplification in terms of standardizing forms and the interpretation of the form is a worthwhile activity and endeavor, and that goal, you know, we certainly would agree with. The outcome and the interpretation of the city in 2008 to eliminate the deduction for capital losses and, pardon me, to allow the deduction for capital losses and eliminate the exclusion for capital gains, you know, again, as I said, I do not agree with. And I wasn't able to obtain statistics to see the effect on revenue to the city government. I understand y'all have to have revenue to provide goods and services and fulfill your responsibility. And I'm not able to tell you, even though I would wish to be able to, the elimination of the now taxation on capital gains, what effect that would have on revenue. I don't have that. But it is substantive to a few individuals who invest their capital and put their capital, their money at risk over a long period of time, trying and attempting to achieve a rate of return from that capital. The, we, and I do believe this, I'm proud of Bowling Green, Warren County. I'm proud of the job that this government does and this commission does. But we do profess to be a progressive community, a community that is, embraces business activity, is a welcoming environment to business activity. And this is somewhat of a disincentive, I believe, to that expansion of business activity. The reason being is, business is attracted, new business is attracted to a labor force. It's one of the key components, as y'all know better than I probably, to a business when they look at a community as an adequate labor force. And of course, labor is people. And of course, people have to have places to live. And this is somewhat of a disincentive to invest in multifamily residential property, because the rate of return from that is diminished by this taxation. Now, I wouldn't say, you'd have to talk to people who do that, I wouldn't say that this is the critical issue, that they're not going to do it, if, I would find that not credible, that they're not going to do that if they continue to have to pay this tax. But it certainly diminishes their return, and it certainly is somewhat of a negative factor to making that, you know, that decision. So one of the things that I would ask y'all to consider is that, as an incentive for investment in the capital infrastructure of multifamily residential housing, to consider the going back to the way it was being treated for tax purposes prior to 2008. The, one of the arguments that I've heard that would be against this decision was conformity, that the differing taxing authorities throughout this area and throughout the state, we need to do it as they do it, treat it as they do it. There are already inconsistencies that exist today, even after this conformity law was passed with the state, here in our own community. And I could give you examples, but one of the examples is that one of the local tax authorities, not the city, will not offset different business activities that are owned by the same taxing entity. And what I'm talking about, and y'all do allow offset, and I think that's the proper way to do it, but there are some local taxing entities that will not. And they treat each separate activity and apply their occupational tax or their net profits tax to that activity. And what I'm talking about is, say you have a sole proprietor that owns an accounting firm, and then also owns a retail store, and it makes a profit of $50,000 off the accounting firm and loses $50,000 on the retail store. Your ordinance allows those two to be both put on the same form, and it would generate no tax. And I do think that's a proper way for that to be handled. But there's another taxing authority in this community that will not allow that offset and taxes the $50,000, but the loss has no effect against that net profit. And so there's already not conformity within the taxing authorities. Another instance is interest income. I think properly, your ordinance excludes interest income from taxation. But there's another taxing authority in the community that taxes interest income in their taxation. So there's already not conformity in different taxing entities handling specific items differently. Now, I do know that, as I think y'all would point out, that many, many, and maybe even most taxing authorities currently tax capital gains. Now, prior to 2008, that was not the case, because right after that was enacted, we also did some surveys, not scientific, but called up and looked at the different taxing authorities throughout the state as to how they handled this issue, because we were very concerned about it. And we did find a number of governmental units that did not tax capital gains at that time, they have since conformed to it and begun taxing it. The issue about that we're complying with the Internal Revenue Code, well, we're complying with the Kentucky State Revenue Code, which adopts the Internal Revenue Code. So therefore, we're just tagging on to that, and we're just doing what the Internal Revenue Code says and the State Tax Code says. That issue. Well, I think that's somewhat of a flawed argument, because the Internal Revenue Code taxes many items that the city does not tax, that aren't applicable. Also, something that I think is very telling and supportive of our position is that the Internal Revenue Code differentiates between capital gain income and ordinary business income, significantly differentiates. It does tax it, but it taxes it at half the rate of ordinary income. So even going back all the way to the Internal Revenue Code, the writers of that recognize that capital gains transactions are not in the nature of an ordinary course of business. And they gave a tax break or a tax reduction to it. And of course, all of my tax study and all my career has been studying laws that differentiate between income generated in the ordinary course of business and investment income as a different category or a different basket of income. And historically, has been treated differently in the taxing laws. That's the sum of my presentation, as rough as it's been, and I certainly would be willing to try to answer any questions that y'all have. Mr. Kevin Mays, he's a tax manager with our office. He's also here with me tonight, and I appreciate him taking his personal time and coming here. He's much more of a tax expert than I am, and so between the two of us, we'll try to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. If y'all don't mind, I'll go through the rest of the presentation, and then we can call them back up for questions, if that's okay? Thank you. Next, I have Representative Jim DeSesary from the 21st District. Representative DeSesary and Representative Jody Richards from the 20th District is here tonight. Both were in the legislature at the time that these statutes were passed, and I invited them to be here to tell us a little bit about, because I've inquired of them the same issue. What, are we doing this correct, or is it up to us, or did you intend to force us into a position that we had not anticipated, or what?
Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and Commission, for allowing me to be here today and inviting me to be here. The answer to your question, Mayor Wilkerson, is no. This was not the intent of what we anticipated to happen here in Bowling Green and with other entities across the Commonwealth. And in fact, when I first heard about this late in 2008, early 2009, it may have been 2009 we were in session, I got a call here from some local business owners that explained to me what was going on and how much of a difference that was going to make to them and their businesses. And I think most of us know that a lot of people who have different businesses operate them individually, especially in the past for tax reasons, but also for liability reasons. And I was interested to hear Mr. Wheeler's statement that the city is allowing multiple businesses to use the offset, but it was my understanding that that's only if they're all under the same ownership. We have lots of businesses here that are separate. So you have, you may have John Doe Citizen, who has one business here and one business here, but they're not under the same tax ID number. So those two businesses wouldn't be able to offset each other. That certainly wasn't the intent of the legislation. That wasn't the way it was explained to us. It was House Bill 258, 2007. And obviously, I believe that the city, in my opinion, has some leeway on how they interpret that or what standards they adopt in dealing with it. I was a little disheartened to hear a couple of years ago that members of the city staff were going around and teaching other cities how to implement the new standards, as they understood it. So to answer your question, Mayor, be quite honest, no, that wasn't our intent to allow this to happen. That is what, that's happening to our local businesses. And I believe it's my understanding, another question Mr. Wheeler had, was how much revenue this is generating, and I believe about $6 million a year for the city, if I'm not mistaken. And that's a substantial hit on local businesses who are providing jobs and trying to keep our economy rolling here in Bowling Green. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. DeSesary. Mr. Richards, did you come up? You were there also, I think you've been there a year or two, if I remember right. But you were there in 2007, but you also sponsored the latest bill that we addressed this year, which standardized the reporting form.
Right.
And my same question is to you, is the intent both of the legislation in 2007 and this year was to remove the opportunity for us to tax what we had previously left out?
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Commissioners. I'm delighted to be here, and the short answer is I agree with Representative DeSesary about that. I do think we probably need to, it looks to me like this needs a legislative fix. And so that's what I intend to do, is to go back to the legislature and see if we can indeed standardize it and rather than, and certainly, it would be our view to give the business folks as much of a break as possible, as did my bill, House Bill 277, which was passed this year, and it was brought to me by CPAs. And I see one of our realtor leaders here, they were very much in favor of this also. And this was to standardize the reporting form for all taxing entities in the state. Now, prior to this, and even now, until the bill goes into effect, every taxing entity in the state, or nearly everyone, has a different form for reporting their taxes, occupational taxes. So what they, one, when the CPAs brought it to me, they said, one business here in town, a very well-known business, reports in more than 30 jurisdictions. And because these forms were so different, they had to be done manually. They couldn't be done with computers. So in one case, the tax liability was $12, it cost $30-something dollars to prepare it. That's not what we ought to be doing. So I will say that the mayor was very much in favor of making this change, as was the county judge. Now, we did have some pushback from some of the larger entities. Jefferson County said it was going to cost them $300,000 to reprogram their computers. So we said, okay, you'll have to reprogram it within five years, so we're going to give you five years to do it. So, and Lexington and some of the larger counties did complain. However, in the end, everybody embraced this. The Chamber of Commerce is very, State Chamber is very pleased with this bill, as we think will encourage businesses in Kentucky. The first, first reporting period is sometime in September. I've forgotten the exact date in September, but there's a date in September that your officials will know about, that all of the tax reporting forms are to be put on the website of the Secretary of State. This is a part of the one-stop-shop program, and, which is good for businesses, so they don't have to come to Frankfurt and run all over the city, but they can do this in the Office of Secretary of State. So these reporting forms are to be put on the Secretary of State's website, and there is a committee made up of city and county and other officials, who will take a look at these forms and try to standardize it as best as possible. And to, and over a period of time, I think most people will adopt these very soon, and then the larger entities will, as they change their program. I think it, I think it will be really good for our businesses across the state to have this kind of standardization, and it's, I think it's overdue, and I'm really glad we were able to pass it, and had virtually no, maybe no opposition in either chamber.
But again, the purpose of the change was to help standardize the form that was used and not what was...
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Julie Shadoan from the Law Firm of Pierce Shadoan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank you for your time and consideration today. Just to lay a little bit of context, my partner and I were asked to research, from a legal interpretation, legal perspective, the result of the city amendment in 2008 to the occupational tax. And we have, it's appeared before this body on one other occasion, and made our opinion known. However, we feel it's important to express the basis for that opinion at this time. We have looked, obviously, at the relevant CARIS statutes, which include Chapter 67 and Chapter 91. We have examined the legislative history for those state statutes, which have been explained to us today by our appropriate representatives. We've reviewed the Bowling Green city ordinance, as well as other city ordinances on this particular topic. We've reviewed the Bowling Green City Ordinance, as well as other city ordinances on this, on this particular topic. And lastly, we have reviewed the Internal Revenue Code and its definitions and mandates as to taxation issues. It is ultimately our conclusion that reasonable minds could differ regarding the interpretation of the state statute that the city has argued is a mandate for this type of tax, especially as it relates to the application of the occupational license fee tax to capital gains. And I won't be redundant in going through the examples. I think Mr. Wheeler was very adept at pointing out to this commission the areas where we already have variances across the state. Clearly, there are other cities within the state, I think the city even recognizes those other cities, that do not tax in this manner. Radcliffe and Hopkinsville are two examples of those. We also have our own history of taxation where we are not taxing consistently as it relates to capital gains, even though there has been no real change in the mandate from the state or federal government in that regard. As, again, Mr. Wheeler pointed out, our own local taxing entities are not even consistent as it relates to taxing on these particular issues. And the Bowling Green City Ordinance that currently exists has exclusions written into it for dividends and interest and other matters. So it would, in, in our opinion, be clearly allowable to include capital gains within those exclusions from occupational tax as it relates to definition of income. So ultimately, our conclusion is that, as, as Mr. Wheeler has said, we fear that the result of this is going to be a chilling effect on the development in, in Bowling Green and Warren County. And it certainly provides a significant disincentive to real estate developers and other business people who put their time and resources into our people and our community. And again, to reiterate, we don't believe there is any mandate in any state or federal statute that we have reviewed that requires taxation of capital gains in this manner.
Thank you, Ms. Shadown. If you don't mind, I'll stop at this point. We've had the completion of the presentation from, that I had planned on, so I'll open it up for questions. Mr. Denning.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me direct this to Mrs. Shadown, if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
Being the old country boy that I am, let me try to ask you a question that I want to make sure I'm clear on. In these entities, we have company A that is over here, and it's a corporate structure, ABC Corporation. The individuals that are president, vice president, and so on of that corporate structure are involved over here with DEF Company, which is a legal corporate entity. Are we saying that this company here should be able to, in this particular example, offset their losses in the other companies where they are president, et cetera, and et cetera? This way, am I making sense?
Well, and I, I know proclaim to be a tax attorney. Let me put that qualification right out there on the table. And I would certainly defer to Mr. Wheeler as it relates to how those particular income tax returns would be filed. And also, it certainly depends on how those entities are formed, as to whether they are formed in a corporate structure, a true sense of the, the word corporate structure, or as an LLC, or some other type of, of legal entity. But as it relates to the, the offset manner, I, I do believe, as it relates to what the city is currently doing, that offset would be allowed in certain circumstances by the city, but not by maybe a, a companion local taxing entity. And Mr. Wheeler, I don't know if you want to add into that or not, but...
Let, let me just add to that. Come on, Steve. Fine attorney just made mention of whether or not another taxing district would be a part of this process where the city is doing one thing and they doing another. That really is not the city's responsibility is to whether or not another taxing district is doing something different than what we are doing, when we're concerned with A and B here and so on. Am I making sense?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. You're making perfect sense. And I probably confused and muddied the water, as I usually do. The, and I totally agree with you. You know, you're bound by your legal authority and jurisdiction. You have to take care of your own knitting and not some other entities. The reason I brought that up only was that there is inconsistency. I have understood that one of the arguments that allows y'all to do what you're doing is this conformity issue. And I was merely pointing out, not suggesting that y'all would have anything to do with that other taxing authority, is that there is different treatment for items between different taxing authorities. There, there isn't a total consistency of how it is interpreted. And the good attorney made the statement in, in her remarks that reasonable people can look at that law and draw different conclusions. And I can't speak for your folks, I can't speak for their folks. All I can speak is that I have observed that the same transaction is being handled differently for the imposition of the tax from these different authorities. So I don't want to get us confused about, really, the issue that I came to talk about. And that was the imposition of this tax on capital gains. You know, that, that's what I do disagree with in the way that the city is handling that. But, but if the argument is, we have to do that, we're compelled to do that because of this consistency argument, I do disagree with that. And I'm not an attorney, I am hopefully a tax person. Because it is, different items are being handled differently through the different taxing authorities. That's the only reason I brought that up. And I, I would totally agree with you that, you know, you need to take care of your business and they need to take care of theirs.
Okay. But we're not saying that if we're talking about more than one corporate entity that has different names should be able to offset their losses, et cetera, and et cetera. Are we?
That's another great question. And it's another area that I've created some confusion and did not intend to. I was using that different entities as another example of where different taxing authorities are handling that issue in a different way. There is not consistency on that issue, even within the geographic location of Warren County and the city of Bowling Green. And you have one entity that will not allow offsetting. You have two other entities that do allow the offsetting in, in restricted circumstance. And I even confused our good representative there, and I apologize to him. And on a limited basis, the city of Bowling Green allows for offsetting. You know, where you have an entity, a taxing entity, that is a sole proprietorship. And the example I gave you was a sole proprietorship, not a corporation, Commissioner Denning, that you were given the example of. And where it's a sole proprietorship with multiple business activities, there's a netting under your ordinance, which I happen to agree with. But if they are separate legal entities, in your example, if I understood it, where there's Corporation A with some, even if they're 100% same owners as Corporation B, as I understand the city's application of that, there is no netting. That each, each entity would, if one entity showed a profit, the other entity showed a loss, the entity showed a profit, would pay the, pay the tax. And I don't know if that's responsive to your questions, but they were good questions.
Sole proprietorship, if it's Joe Denning this and Joe Denning that,
Right.
then I am to pay on capital gains?
Yes.
But if it's a corporate structure, then they cannot use another corporate structure to offset anything?
Correct, they cannot. But they also would pay capital gains, pay tax on their capital gains.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can, can I help direct the conversation? I know Representative DeSesary and Richards have an event at 5:00 that they need to be at. Do we have any questions for them?
I don't know. Let me ask my question.
Sure.
On, in BG 2008-8, which addresses this, on page nine, under B1, B says, "The following income is specifically determined to be defined as wages and compensation and subject to the occupational license tax imposed." And then number three of that says, "Wages, salaries, commissions, or other income earned, derived, or received on the sales, rental, or leasing of personal and real property." Where did that definition come from? Did it come out of the KRS?
Well, that's, that's ordinary business income if they are operating, you know, that, that is their ordinary business income. Capital gains wouldn't apply in that position. I'm sorry?
I'm not sure I'd agree that that's applicable just to ordinary income.
Well, that's my question. And so my question is, that particular language came from where? Did it come from the KRS, or did it come from?
It's been in our ordinance from the start, most likely.
So this is, that is not, that's not new language? That wasn't, that wasn't new language that came about because of the move of the legislature?
No.
Okay.
Any questions for Representatives? Thank y'all so much for coming. I know that you, you need to hustle on, but thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you all, everybody.
Your insight was helpful. All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wheeler or Ms. Shadown?
The gentleman raised his hand. Would, would you want to address that?
Yes, you're talking about the difference between the tax laws.
Name, please.
James Cook.
Thank you, sir.
One of the things, in, in the taxing situation, I have, I have capital gains and I have ordinary income off of real estate. Because I'm in the business of real estate and developing real estate. And when I sell that, my tax return, that's ordinary income. But the properties that I hold for investment over a year's period of time, those are capital gains and the IRS treats those totally separate. Different tax rates, different conclusions, exemptions, and everything else. And I really think that is so vague to, to interpret it to, to also include capital gains. And I think that's where the, you know, somebody split the hair there in their favor rather than, than leaving it out. But I think it was typically always treated before as ordinary income. And then this was evolved that, you know, hey, you know, we've got capital gains over here. That's income off of real estate, but it's also a different treatment as far as the state and the federal government treats it. And I think they were sort of tying that in there a little tight.
Anything else for Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Wheeler?
Come on back. Come on down.
It, it's a very similar question. Because it's, it's where I'm hung up on this and trying to make the very best decision. And one of the things you said is that our new ordinance added the ability to deduct capital losses. And it removed the ability to deduct capital gains. Is that what you said, or did I misunderstand?
No, I think that's true. You, you, under your new ordinance, you can deduct capital losses, but capital gains will be taxed, if that's, if I understood what you said.
Okay. Second question then, and it goes directly to what Mr. Cook was speaking of. How does one define, how do you make the difference? I have three jobs, okay? I work for Bellwood, I work for the city, and I mow some grass on the side. All three of those produce some amount of money to me, of which all three I call income. How is it that that income that I derive from those three businesses is different than if I purchased the lot next door to my house and kept it for a year and then sold it?
The, one of the rules I always looked at is what I call sweat. Is income derived from my personal activity, my personal efforts? Or is income derived from investing a, an asset? And the income is derived from the investment of that asset rather than my personal activity? And I do believe that goes back to the beginnings of my entire career in tax law. And that tax law throughout that time has differentiated the, the nature of what produced that income. And, and that's what I would say to you in your example. The nature of you invested in the lot, yes, you signed a deed. But did you spend hours and hours and hours producing the gain that hopefully that lot would generate when you sold it? No. The land itself did that. The investment itself did that. No different than investing in a certificate of deposit. To me, investing in this multifamily real estate is no different than investing in a certificate of deposit and earning interest on that certificate of deposit while it's invested with the bank. I didn't do anything, the investment did. I think this capital gains issue we're talking about, really mostly was not through any effort that I produced. It was just the nature of the investment and the risk that I took. That, that lot you bought, a year from now, it could be worth less and you'd have a loss.
Okay. So if I understand right, because I, I want to recap it just to make sure. If, if I invest a lot of time and effort into making something, it would be, under your position, taxable? If I just bought something and hung on to it and hopefully it makes money, maybe it doesn't one way or the other, then it would not be taxable under this?
Generally speaking, that's what I would propose to you. Now, I'm speaking specifically about the real estate investment.
Understand, understand.
Yes.
Okay. It's a good explanation, thank you.
Good question.
But if he makes income on that lot, then what happens?
I would, what currently happens is the city would impose 1.5%, 1.85% tax on the gain of that.
That's what we currently do.
That's what you're currently doing. Since 2008, what I'm proposing is you shouldn't do that.
Shouldn't propose the 1.85% on his gain on that lot?
One final question.
Sure.
If I understood you correctly, early, earlier in your presentation, you said that ordinary income is taxed differently. I think one of the things you said, let me, is that why you saw ordinary income and capital gains as different is because they're already taxed differently.
Again, I caused confusion. I appreciate you asking that question. In the Internal Revenue Code, historically, it has recognized the difference between sweat-earned income and investment income. And it's recognized it to the extent, it's taxed both, but it taxed the investment activity capital gain at lower rates. So it, it recognized, there is a, there is a significant difference between those two. I call them baskets of income, but types of income. And when, when we look at the Kentucky revised statute, KRS.750, small parenthesis 6, it talks about gross receipts. And here's a great example of why reasonable minds can draw reasonable interpretations that are different from one another. And if you look at that... that are different from one another. And if you look at that, it defines gross receipts means all receipt, all revenues, pardon me, or proceeds derived from the sale, lease, or rental of goods, services, or property by a business entity reduced by the following, and it gives some exemptions. It does not say real property. Now, it says property. Property can be real property. Property can be personal property. There are all types of property interests. So it is vague, but historically, for almost the entire operation of this ordinance by the city, it, maybe by default, but it interpreted that word property as not real property.
Thank you.
Michelle, I'll conclude.
I may add something, I think, to Mr. Nash's issue about whether the state statute mandates the definition or uses the same language. I knew I had this somewhere. I found in my notes that the state statute was amended significantly both in 2003 and 2004, and most of that was to clarify definitions or establish definitions where they did not already exist. And most notably, when a new piece of legislation is proposed, the proponent must file what's called a, an impact statement. The Legislative Research Commission then looks at the impact statement to determine what the new proposed language will do as it relates to the purpose of the original statute. And in this particular case, there had to be a fiscal impact statement because of the subject matter of taxes. And the proponent specifically said that the new language in the statute to identify and define net profits, gross receipts, and sales revenue should not have a significant impact on local revenues since the definitions of compensation, taxable net profits, gross receipts mirrors what most local governments are currently using to levy their taxes. So it wasn't an intent of the legislature when they made those changes and included those definitions to significantly change what was being done by the cities. It was merely to provide a definitional basis for that tax authority. And then in 2004 is when the sales revenue language was added. And it says that sales revenue was defined as receipts from the sale, lease, or rental of goods, services, or property. So that language did not exist in its current form until 2004. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment before?
One more question.
Mr. Simpson. No, that's why, that's why we're here. That's why the work session's forward.
How many one more questions do I get?
Mike Simpson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Mike Simpson. I'm the owner of Chandler Property Management, and I manage property for real estate investors. I myself am a real estate investor. And I guess, Mr. Nash, back to your illustration of owning that lot, one thing that I just, and this may have already been mentioned, but when you purchase that lot, you put capital at play. And you can either realize a gain or a loss on the capital you put at play. The investors that I work with oftentimes borrow that capital, and they usually borrow it from a local bank. So, and oftentimes, they'll buy it through one of the many real estate professionals that are here. And before the bank will approve the release of that capital, a local appraiser has to go out. So there are a lot of jobs that are created in this community from the sale of real estate. But again, in, at least in my view, one reason that this should be exempt is that investors are putting this capital at play. They are, they are taking the risk. They're putting the risk out on the table. And then if they do happen to make a gain on it, they're having to incur this tax. And I don't think you should penalize somebody in this community that's willing to put capital at play that in turn helps create jobs with the ripple effect of putting that capital at play.
Mr. Simpson, I might be putting you on the spot, and you'll have to answer this if you don't want to. But we've had some discussion between ordinary business income and capital gains. And sometimes I think members of the general public have a difficult time understanding the difference between those. Obviously, if you don't have money to invest, you have no gain, and they don't understand. But do you use capital gain for your living expenses, or do you then turn around and reinvest it in the community to keep things going?
I reinvest in the community, absolutely. I do not use capital gains for living expense because, you know, you, basically, you can't budget a capital gain, you know? I can't sit here and tell you I'm going to sell X number of pieces of property next year that will realize a gain, and that's what I'm going to live on to pay my bills with because you don't know what the market's going to be next year. And you don't know if there will be buyers or sellers. What I can tell you is that any of my partner clients that have invested in real estate in Bowling Green, Kentucky, whenever they are approached about selling a piece of real estate, which in turn would probably create a loan at a local bank, could very well create a commission for a real estate professional here, all of those things I've said before, the very first thing that they will ask or consider is, "What are my tax implications?" That's the first thing. It's not, usually it's not, you know, "Do I need this money? Can I put it into something else?" The very first thing they're going to go to a tax professional with is, "What are my tax implications?" And the greater the tax implication, I can just assure you, the less likely it is that they will sell and in turn create the ripple effect that comes with the sale of real estate. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Did you have another question?
If I may, Mr. Simpson.
Sure.
What, what do you eventually do with the money you make? I understand you don't use it to budget for your expenses.
From, from the sale of real estate, sir?
So, so the mayor asked you, you know, "Do you use it for income?" And you said, "No." You reinvest it. Eventually, you're going to die.
Yes.
We all are.
Yes.
And you're going to have a really big investment portfolio. And what's, do you plan on using that money for something before you die, or are you just taking care of other people?
You might pay off your loan.
That's, that's a good question. I appreciate you asking it. You know, it, there are probably a lot of answers to that. But, you know, believe it or not, those of us that do this have sold some pieces that maybe aren't working. Just a quick example, if you and I buy a duplex and we say, "Gosh, we can rent that for $1,000 a month, and our payment's only 900," and Mr. Nash and Mr. Simpson are the smartest real estate investors in town, and we purchase that piece of property, and we put our capital at play, and the market changes. There's been a lot of product built, and Mr. Nash and Mr. Simpson can only receive $500 a month. So Mr. Nash and Mr. Simpson are having to put in $400 per month. Well, we'd probably have a meeting and say, "Let's get out of this investment." But we're probably going to sell that for a loss. So as much as I would like to tell you that every sale is a winner, there are sales that are losses, and frankly, sometimes these help offset some of those losses of a year ago, two years ago, or whenever. Markets change, and we've seen that here. So if, if you do sell a piece of property, it really depends upon the circumstance. There are 1031 tax-free exchanges available that Mr. Wheeler could speak of, where you could identify a piece of property and roll all of that in to a new piece of property. But it could be used for other investment purposes. I did sell a piece of property about three years ago, and I invested, I took, I paid the gains, and I took the proceeds, the net proceeds, and I invested in a different entity entirely.
Okay.
So oftentimes, it will provide, at least in my case, it could provide capital for a different type of investment. But certainly, if I was going back into another piece of real estate, I would defer to a 1031 tax-free exchange. Did that answer your question?
Yes. Sorry to make you confront your own mortality. It's a very, very poorly worded question.
That's all right. Other questions for me?
Anything else?
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, if you don't mind, then I'll conclude with a couple other statements. The standardization law that was passed, I think, was, was a good attempt to try to help businesses in town or throughout the state respond to the multifaceted forms that they encounter in local jurisdictions throughout the community or throughout the state. And I really don't think, even from the comments of the representatives, that there was any intent of the legislature to cause us to recalculate what we were taxing and what we were not taxing. When I look at the statute itself, the comment was made that, is that on the right, right form here, where gross receipts indicating the sale, lease, or rental of goods, services, or property? And that was one thing I keyed on, and the law is not consistent. But by and large, when they're talking of property, the term "real property" or "real estate" is included throughout. When you go back and refer to Section 61 of the U.S. Code of defining gross income, it includes gains derived from dealings in property. But it also includes dividends and interest in that gross income. And on page 11 of our ordinance, we identify items that are excluded from this license fee. And one of those exclusions includes income from pensions, interests, and dividends. And I think that our interpretation should include the same, or include capital gains on at least real estate in that because you gain interest or dividends from entities that are called real estate investment trusts that purchase real estate, and then you buy a share of that on the open market. But there are a lot of things that are, that are exempted from the profit license. That includes banks, national guardsmen, precinct election workers, public service corporations, alcoholic beverage licensees, life insurance companies, investment funds, the income from pension, interest, and dividends trust, domestic servants, dancers, musicians, entertainers, disability, and death benefits. So we do have a history of exempting some. And why do we key in on capital gains? I'm not really quite sure because the purpose of this, and especially in the case of real estate, is that that item is already taxed annually through our property tax rate. Now, this, again, we're talking about the gain from that, but how many times is something, is it appropriate to tax something? And the gain from that real estate, I would imply to you that it should be excluded. Like I say, both of our representatives were here and had no intent to, when they passed this legislation, to cause us to change what we included in the imposition of the net profit license fee. And I think I've covered that, but I still, still am very frustrated because I think the, the presentation that was made in 2008 was correct. I do think we're allowed home rule with our tax rate and any exceptions that we want to have. And why we chose to make that change, which was clearly a substantive change that didn't come before the board to make that particular decision, is, is a disappointment to me. And I'll, I'll plan to propose returning that definition to its pre-2008 ordinance. And I'd be happy to entertain your questions. Yes, sir?
Mayor, we have heard from one side of this problem, I guess. We see what is taking place as far as investors and the presentation here this afternoon. Now, there is another side to this issue that we as a legal body is going to have to make a decision on. And my question, I guess, is to the city manager and to the chief financial officer. What has been the income derived from the way that this law is written now?
Before the answer, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Is that all right? You're correct, and I should have opened the floor back to them. I apologize for that. I did include in your packet the 2008 information that was presented by staff when we talked about this the first time, so they were aware of what we had previously. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Nash.
I have a question for Mr. Wheeler, if I could ask one.
Well, I think Joe had a question for you, which was, how much?
I'll defer to Jeff. I don't know that answer.
Well, let me just add to that. I bring that up because when we as a city look at what's coming into the city of Bowling Green, regardless of where it's coming from, we look at it as to what we can provide in services to the citizens of Bowling Green, whether it's police protection, fire protection, public works, et cetera and et cetera. I guess my concern is, is just like when you take something away, if that is the case, whenever we make a decision on this, what is going to be lacking possibilities in the city of Bowling Green? Does that mean we're not going to be able to hire 10 new fire policemen? We're not going to be able to buy police cars? We're not going to be able to buy fire equipment? All those things that we are mandated to do as a city?
Anecdotally, the number 6 million was thrown out. I don't know where that came from. I just know during this hysterical period from 2008 on, we have had budget difficulties. So it's not like we've had a lot of surplus money. And that's a certifiable fact that Jeff can present to you, and you have had to make some of the painful decisions over that last couple of years. Jeff can answer that factually if.
Yeah. I could talk for half an hour. There's so many things I would like to say, but I don't know if we have time. But I like to clarify. I'd like to clarify a few things. The $6 million number that Mr. DeCesare mentioned, he mentioned a $6 million a year impact. That is not $6 million of capital gains that we've collected. That's not taxed on capital gains. That's our total net profit license fee revenues. That's true, that's normal business profits on businesses and Slims mowing business and anything and everything. So I want to clarify that for one thing, that we have not, we have not captured $6 million in new revenue from, from 2008 from taxing capital gains. In fact, in '07, this is, there's so many moving parts. In '07 is when we changed our tax rate from 2% to 1.85%. So we had that going into effect. So in FY07, we collected $6,008,000 net profits. '08, we dropped down to 5.9 million. '09, we rose slightly to $6,502,000. '10, we dropped back down again to $5,463,000. FY11, we rose again to $6,329,000. And then FY12, we dropped again to $6,220,000. So it's like this. There's no trend. There's no rhyme or reason. We used, we, before '08, it was totally flipped, where we, we didn't tax capital gains, and we made them add back the losses, and we flipped that again. So to me, I mean, all we've done since '08 is flipped it back the other way, where we tax capital gains and allow capital losses. So anyway, that's So anyway, that speaks to that. You know, we talk about other jurisdictions around here doing it different. Just because they're doing it different, I can't say that they're doing it right. We took this in '08 and did what we thought it was telling us to do, and I'll apologize to you, Mayor, back in '08, if we missed the capital gains thing, but at the time, when I took this position in '06, I knew our form did not align with what our ordinance says. Our ordinance has always said that we follow the federal tax law, therefore, really, since 1966 or '67, it's up for argument whether these should have been taxed or not, but our ordinance really should have always mentioned it as an exemption on those things you read out loud. So the fact that it was never there, and the overarching rule that says we should follow federal tax law, and we make everybody file a federal tax return with all their net profit returns, in '07, '07 was really the first year, December '07, when we sent out the 2007 tax year net profit returns, we knew this standardization was a must-do. It was coming beginning of the next year. We had to change our tax rate. So I told our staff, I said, while we're having to pay this money to change our form and print buku new forms, we really probably need to take that off to get everything aligned with what our ordinance says and what the state law is telling us to do, because we could find no black and white statement that says you shall not tax capital gains. So at the time, by default, I guess, when we adopted that standardization, I thought this, our form was really the problem. Our form never was really correct. And so when I took this position '06 from '07, that's when we started looking at things, and maybe I didn't intentionally mislead this board in thinking that, you know, we're slipping in a tax. At the time, all I was doing is administrative cleanup and making our form what I thought would then align with our Chapter 18, the state statute, and the Internal Revenue Code. So that's the reason that all happened. And in my opinion, the problem we have is the language in this KRS, and I'm going to pass out the proposed draft of House Bill 277 that Mr. Richards mentioned, and on that form, this is a form that's come out, the Kentucky Occupational License Association is on the task force to do the standardized form, and as you can see right there, they're going to have capital gains on there, and this is the form they're proposing that we all use. So to me, I think some things have to happen at the state level, because otherwise, you all are going to make us, I don't know how to say it, but literally, if, right now, the average taxpayer out there, I mean, if they're coming from used to paying it in other places, they're going to ask us, why, City of Bowling Green, are you all not going to let us take our loss when other places are allowing us to take our loss, and we allowed it at the federal level and the state level? So we're going to be kind of in a quandary. I don't know what our response is going to be to them. So that's the issue. I need more support, I guess, if we're going to do this, and Gene can jump here at any time, but my preference would be if y'all don't want to tax it, then let's specify in our ordinance who's exempt from it and not even require them to file a net profit return, because once we require them to file a net profit return, I think we fall under the rules of KRS 67 and the Internal Revenue Code. So I need help here.
I'll put my dog in the spite, too. I always like to have not a dog in the spite, but I will, but all due respect to Representative Richards and Representative Cesare, they could have fixed this. They could have fixed it from the very beginning, they could have fixed it the last three years. Like, three years ago, we said, if you want to fix this, fix it legislatively. They drafted a language, I guarantee you, 99% of communities and cities and counties around the state tax capital gains based on that state language.
Radcliffe and Hawkinsville are the only two not doing it, the only two.
Everybody else, you know, everybody else does. Kentucky League of Cities, everybody wants to opinion them. I checked with them, they said there's no exclusion for capital gains. You look at our ordinance, you look at the state statute, and no offense to Julie, who, by the way, is my supervisor and my second job, thank you very much, but I won't have a second job after this. But I'm not too sure that there is, reasonable minds could differ. I think the language says what the language says. If you want to change the language, change the language. Kind of like Jeff got lots of points I want to cover. Mayor, you went through the list of exemptions. Almost every exemption you mentioned, everybody's got to remember, cities can only do what the state says we can do. The state says we can do occupational taxes. The state also says who you can tax, who you can't. Almost every exemption you read, the state in statute says we can't tax them. Our ordinance says we don't tax them because the state says we can't. You mentioned, everybody laughed, dancers. We didn't do dancers because it's almost impossible to get them to come in town, but who pays? The places they come in and perform pay a fee for them. They pay an extra fee because we can't keep track of the dancers coming in our town. That's why we did that. The only one that I can think of that really was an exemption for us was domestic servants and households. I'm not sure why we did that one, but we exempted domestic servants and households. But almost everything else is state mandated. We had no control because the state tells us what we can do. Just like in this statute, I think the state tells us what we do. And the state, when you read that language, it says you tax the sales of property. And no offense, I think that clearly meant personal real both. Our ordinance says real estate, it says real property. So that's, we've got that language there for, I guess, for clarity and make sure. Again, I think Representative Richards hit around the line. If he needs, what happens is, he needs to come back in next year, and if they meant to exclude his income, they need to amend the state statute to make it clear. I would tell you, I think they'll get strong pushback from the Louisville's and Lexington's of this city, and maybe other cities, too, because of concern about what impact this is going to do. And kind of Jeff got lots of issues that I want to at least talk about, because I know the difference between ordinary income and investment income, but I may beg to differ a little bit, that if I go out and buy a fourplex and keep it for 10 years and sell it, I've got sweat in that building, too, because I'm fixing, I'm painting it, you know, I'm cleaning it when people leave. I'm paying ordinary incomes, I do that, but if I sell it, at least in my view, by the state statute, if I sell it to end that 10 years and make a gain on it, that's a gain I made from that business, my business of operating that multiple-unit housing thing. Julia, I'm not sure if you caught it, a brand-new case came out Friday out of Court of Appeals out of Louisville. I read this morning, first time I found it. A, what was it, a, two long-term health care facilities in Jefferson County, been in business for quite a few years, decided to go out of business, and as part of going out of business, they sold their facilities, made a considerable gain on that. Louisville taxed them. They challenged it. The Court of Appeals said Louisville's ordinance says you tax capital gains. That was a gain. Basically, the court said that was part of their business. When they sold those businesses, they sold those buildings, that was part of their long-term care business, and when they made income on it, that was taxable income in the city of Louisville. So again, if this is a legislative fix, let's do it legislatively, and a couple of other things, and everybody wants to go on and get done. Having said that, you know, I think by statute, they're subject. You know, having said that, there are several cases in Kentucky, and like Julia, I'll look at them, Rental Valley, I'm not sure if you looked at that one, Womack versus Flemingsburg. Basically said that, well, they cite Kentucky Constitution, Section 171. If you don't mind, I'll read it, because it's easier to read and try to memorize them. But it says, "Taxes shall be levied and collected for public purposes only and shall be uniformed on all property of the same class." Two basic principles, taxes must be uniform within each class, and although there need not be uniformity among classes, there must be equality among sufficiently related classes so that interclass discrimination cannot set to be arbitrary, unreasonable, or capricious. Different classifications will be upheld if there are substantial differences between occupations separately classified, and the differences need not be great. Basically, what these cases are saying is that, once you do this, you can designate classifications that are not subject or have different subject, I guess, taxation, but you've got to be careful how you do that, that you don't discriminate among the classes to too great of extent. One of the cases out of Flemingsburg, kind of the opposite of this one, Flemingsburg decided, I guess, since doctors make so much, they want to tax doctors more, so they hit the doctors with a higher occupational rate. Court of Appeals said, can't do that, that's discriminatory. You can't treat doctors worse than you treat everybody else. That was in violation of Kentucky, Section 171 Kentucky Constitution, and they threw it out, said you can't do it. The only thing I can tell you, if you create a separate classification, because I think it's clearly subject to the state statute until changed, if you make a class, a different classification, and say we're going to exempt it, two things. One, like Jeff said, Jeff's got to have information clearly defined what it is you're exempting, not just, we can't say, go back to the way it was. We've got to have more, because your ordinance says, in my view, it's taxable. We've got to have language in there that's got to specify what it is that you're now deciding you're going to exempt. And it's got to be clear for staff, not just six months from now, but 10 years from now, because people change. Everybody's got to understand what that means. You know, who's, you know, what income's going to be exempt, what people are going to be exempt. Though, if we're going back to the way it was, as Jeff mentioned a few minutes ago, people previously did not get credit for losses. So I don't know if we're going to pick that part back up, because if you benefit one side, you're going to disbenefit the other, if that's a word, I'm not sure if that's a word. But, you know, those people who didn't get to take credit for losses, if we go back to the way we were, they'll now be taxed on losses. You know, so it depends on what you do, but, you know, we've got to be clear if you're going to set up a separate classification that's not exempt from this, what that classification is. It's easy to find, domestic help. Now, that's easy, we know who that is. So if you're going to do this, it's not just, we can't say, go back. We've got to know what we're going back to. There's got to be specific language in the ordinance that says this, you know, this income is not subject. And I guess, go back to the point I tried to make a few minutes ago, too. At least in my mind, I see maybe some differences between if I buy, vacant a lot, hold it for 10 years, and all I do is mow it, or pace light and mow it, you know, versus like the Louisville case, where they actually ran a business out of that, and at the end of 10 or 15 years, they sold the business, sold the buildings. That's still a business. Their business was providing that service. At the end of the day, they sold that business, including the buildings. So we need to make sure if you're going to exempt it, we're going to exempt all capital gains, certain capital gains. Again, we have to be specific and exact about who you're talking about applying this exemption to, but I'm not sure, hold on a second.
These businesses in Louisville also probably took depreciation on those buildings for years and years and years as an expense, so how do you handle that?
Good question. I mean, I'd be glad to appreciate it as well. Of course, I have one more thing I think I was going to say, too. Oh, Jeff mentioned it, about this standardized form. You know, the statute in place right now says that after July 1st of 2017, we have to use that form, or we have to get permission from the state to use a different form. And you have to do, I think, some type of financial hardship to use your own form. You know, unless the state changes the statute, I think our form will not be in compliance with that state standard form, because as Jeff said, it has capital gains on it. Whether the state now will say we've got a financial hardship that we have to use our own form, but again, that kind of deviates from the whole purpose of the standardized form. I mean, Bowling Green will be out there, sitting out there with the form, but nobody else has, because everybody else around us, we know of, including the bigger cities, of course, you know, they are taxing us. But again, you go back to my basic premise, you know, I don't be disrespectful of our legislators, but they wrote this language, and I think most people that read and interpreted, interpreted the way the City of Bowling Green's interpreted it. It's an easy fix. If they want to fix it, go fix it.
And just one more comment. I will obviously carry out your all's wishes on this, however you want to proceed, but I just need some clearly defined rules of the game that we can fall back on, and we have a foundation, you know, to respond to taxpayers. So that's where I need your help. I'll carry it out, however you want to do it, but we need to get some things cleaned up and clearly defined, and where I'm not, or my staff is not, you know, in the eyes of some, out of compliance with what some perceive as be state law.
And to respond, last point, one thing Julie said. I'm sure when they changed the statute, they said there was no change and no financial difference, because most cities were taxing capital gains. At that time, if they looked at Bowling Green's ordinance, they also would have surmised that Bowling Green was taxing as well, because our ordinance says you did. I think it had generic language, if you tell me if I'm wrong, that basically we follow the IRS rules or something to that effect, but by our ordinance language, we probably should have been taxing it since '66.
We can't find where and how that ever got put on our form, on the back of the form. It's just always been there.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Wheeler?
Maybe I didn't hear you correctly using Slim's terminology, but did you mention that you did your own independent research of what other cities were doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you said that you found that most of the cities at some point in time started complying with state law?
I assume that they have, based on the information that y'all have looked at it, and only two cities do not. When we first became aware of this change, we did, were shocked about it because it hadn't been vented publicly, or that the community was apprised of what we determined to be a significant tax increase. And so we did call several surrounding communities to try to find out, what's everybody doing? And I cannot, I'm an old guy, and that was a few years ago, I cannot recall, but there were many more than two communities that were not.
I thought I heard you say at one point, other cities start complying with state law. That was what your research showed.
Well, if that's, and I'm sure you took, you take good notes. My intent of my statement was that, based on the statistic, only two cities do not now tax, that the other cities have begun taxing.
At some point in time, that was in 2008?
Yes, when we did our look at it, it was sometime during 2008.
Do you know why the other cities, all of a sudden, in 2008, started to follow this change in state law?
I could give you some speculation. We're not in court, so I can give you my opinion. I cannot support it.
But it factually was true. At some point in time, cities in 2008 started to comply with what they perceived was the change in the state law?
There, I'll give you my speculation. The other cities saw the ability to increase their revenue, and they took the opportunity.
Oh, okay.
Not necess, I don't know their motivation, if it was to comply or not comply.
Do you know if Warren County or Warren County School District applies this?
They do.
They do?
They do, they are not consistent with you on some other issues.
To investors' detriment or to investors' benefit?
Investors' detriment.
So we are actually more liberal than some of our surrounding contemporaries?
Yes.
Other than the offsetting, Mr. Wheeler, is there, what other things are there? Do you?
Mr. Mize, interest income, taxation of that.
At the business and individual level?
Not individual level, business level.
Okay, we don't tax it at the individual?
That's correct.
Thanks.
And I agree you shouldn't, because that's an investment income, just like I contend capital gains is.
Right, well, here's one other thing, and, you know, show her underwear if you want to speak that way, but any individual can really still go out there and buy probably a piece of property in their individual name as an investment, and we would never, we wouldn't tax it. I could go out and buy two residential houses just for investment purposes, hold them for five years, not rent them out, sell them, make a gain, it wouldn't be required to file a city net profit return on them.
Correct. Y'all have made it to city, pardon me, I'll let you finish.
So when you really look at this, I mean, anybody in the, on the residential side, if they stay within those guidelines and it's under their individual name, can go out and turn property every couple of years and make, you know, pretty good money, whereas, you know, if you say it's a commercial property, we do have a requirement if you buy or own a one commercial property and you're leasing it out, obviously, it's considered a business. You need to register with it and pay it, pay us, but the other side is, like I said, if you're keeping it in your individual name and it's just a real estate investment personally, we don't tax those, I mean...
What about if I do this? Same thing you just described, but I do three.
Three?
Same thing, but I do three.
If you go to three, and... If you go to three, and you're...
Four.
You're making, making real income on them, yeah, that would be considered a business.
And so the city's made a determination, it's okay for me to invest property, capital asset, and not pay tax if it's two or less.
And I don't know where the...
But if I do three, four, five, 10, it should be taxed.
Yeah, and I don't know where the two or more came in.
Pardon me?
We go to one if you want, but...
Yeah, I don't know where we, how we picked two and how we picked one, but it's, it's just always been in the ordinance, so.
This other, well, I don't mean to be argumentative. I am trying to be informative.
We want to solve the problem, too. We understand the point of investment and how assets create more wealth and helps everybody in the community. We understand, we understand that. I think Jeff, from a staff point of view, addressed what was perceived as some kind of pandering of information on our part, which we didn't do, because you just mentioned that your research showed that other cities at some point in time had started to do that, and even our own neighbors do it. But if the commission wants to change it, I think Gene is saying that we have to define what exactly that is, and add that to housekeepers, and add that to, you can't go back to how it was. Because if you go back to how it was, wasn't that basically a trade-off between losses and gains?
I think financially, Jeff would say it was.
Yeah.
May I answer that, if it were a question?
Yeah.
I still didn't hear an answer to a question that I thought was a good question. And I alluded to it. How much revenue does a city actually receive, or has received, in '08, '09, '10, '11, and '12, from the imposition of that tax on capital gains?
Well, David, you want to take this?
How much revenue has been lost through allowing the capital loss during...
We, we don't have the capability, we've, we've made attempts, we don't have the capability with our technology to, to pinpoint what part of a net profit fee is tied to a capital gains. We, we've looked at that, we tried. We don't have that detailed in our, our software system.
Okay.
So all we can do is look at total revenues, and we see no true...
There was no huge slug of money coming in from the imposition of this?
It's kind of all we have, all we have to go on.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that.
Sorry.
One of the concerns that I have is that whatever this slug of revenue is, you know, it's being imposed on a relatively small part of our population that are taking risk to build infrastructure that really benefits our community. Mr. Simpson, I thought, made a good point on that. So I know it would be helpful to the, Representative DeSesore mentioned the $6 million. I thought you did a great job, Mr. Meisel, of kind of clearing that up. That's the total revenue from, from the entire imposition of the tax. So the city commission is not talking about something of that magnitude nearly with the decision. And it would be helpful, but if it's not there, it's not there, to be able to quantify it for you as to how much you're talking about. To, to answer your question, I think intuitively, we, we filed several hundreds of returns, that capital gains are greater than capital losses. That would be my, my assessment. So the amount of revenue you've lost through allowing capital gains is much less, I think, than the amount of revenue that you collect through the imposition on capital gains. I don't think it's a 50/50 that capital losses are equal to capital gains in terms of the returns that I prepare and file. So there is, if, if the, the city does decide to, quote, "as much as possible, go back to the way it was," even though legally it may not be possible, there would be some net, I think there would be some net loss in revenue, because I don't think the capital gain, I think capital gains are larger than capital losses on these returns, the returns we file anyway.
Yeah, like I said before, I don't, I don't care which way we go on this, but I just need some, some sound foundation of how to...
We need to create a classification that's defined to allow this exemption, which would affect, take it back to how it used to be. But that has to be defined by definition, clarity. Is that right, Gene?
Plus some amendments in other places as well.
Thank you, Mr. Steve.
Thank you.
Anything else? I appreciate you taking a look at this and coming up with some, some additional research, so that we have all the information necessary to move forward with the decision. Any other questions or comments from the board?
You?
You know, the comments from the crowd?
Kevin's got us...
Do you want us to prepare, prepare a, a change? Hang on just a minute.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I don't know, sir, I'm, um, do I have to come over here?
Yeah, nobody can hear you if you can.
We want to know your name, too.
(laughter)
Yeah, where you live?
He isn't shy.
I'm a shy guy. Ron Cummings. I've been sitting back here and listening. Thank you all for allowing us to come and to your work session. And there are tons of Realtors here that are represented by the Realtor Association. And I think you're, this whole thing is becoming more complicated, and y'all beating something that doesn't, to me, is a simple answer. I think what the issue is, from my perspective, I'll speak only for myself, is that nobody ever has a problem paying taxes on a capital gain. It's not the issue. The issue is, if you were going to apply your governing laws for the city, that we're also allowed to take a capital loss, and we have one in that same calendar year. And that's what we're looking for. We're just looking for a fair situation to be able to, to be able to do that. And the way it's set up right now is, if I gain on property A, and I lose on property B, I'm not allowed to take my loss off of B to offset my gain on A. Therefore, I'm paying an unfair tax because of that investment that was made. And I think, if I'm correct, I think that's what, at least my perspective from sitting back here listening to you all, I think that that's not been really hammered home of what the issue is. I think by removing and going back to prior '98, prior 2008 kind of taxation, I think I saw what we're looking for. As long as it's applied evenly based on a federal return, whatever that federal return might be, your net capital, your net profit tax should be based on total income. And if you have a capital gain in a particular year, then obviously you're going to pay taxes on that. And I don't think anybody here is opposed to paying taxes on something, if there's money put in your pocket that is earned income, through a lot of questions that have been raised, I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is to not double, basically double tax it when you, when you're not allowed to take off a loss. I think that's the concern. So I appreciate a chance to speak.
Mr. Cook?
Just wanted, thank you, I didn't thank you all before, to let us come up and, and be with you. House Bill 277, the Realtors, we were supporting that bill. That was the standardization of the form. Because it's on that form doesn't mean it's to be taxed. And that is a draft, they're way away from having a final draft, but because it's on that form does not mean that the state is mandating a tax. So I want to clarify, clarify that. And capital gains does get separate treatment, different taxing, and that's what we're after, is try to get a separate taxation or treatment for capital gains, because that is the driving force of our economy here. As an investor comes into town and looks at it, and they look at the entire income potential from a piece of property, and it's a go or no-go. They take it all the way through. Mr. Wheeler's very good at doing this, and then with all the taxations from beginning to ending sale, and that decision is made based on the return on that investment. And the more taxes we put to that, it, it hurts that go or no-go decision at the end. And also remind you all that these capital access, as the mayor said, are taxed every year, not only on property taxes, but the income stream from that tax. And then at the end, when we sell that property, yes, we have depreciation, but then the city, actually the way they're handling it now, they tax all that recapture of depreciation again. So, you know, we're getting really hit pretty hard with the city taxes as far as capital gains and capital assets. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you have questions? Yeah, I'm saying, do you want us to prepare a change to, to exempt certain income, capital gains?
Yes.
I mean, okay. Gene, you have questions?
Well, somebody's got to give us language, which you excluded, because I can't just mix stuff up. You've got to tell me what you want.
I'll, I'll make sure that you get that, get that to you. That will represent the de facto situation in, in what year was that, 2007?
No, we can't go back which in time.
But it would represent that. But we, we can add it to section, let me find it here.
We're going to start disallowing losses, too?
On page 11, line 10.
You're going to disallow losses, then, if we go back to the way we were?
Back to the way we were.
So we're going to tax losses?
Yeah, as long as we can line it out here.
Well, let me, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We need to have, I guess, based on, because this is totally confusing to a lot of people, I guess, we need to have another work session on the prepared document that the staff is going to present back to us.
Have no problem with that, anyone?
No.
No, well, yeah, we just want a clarity. Can we think there's a solution to do what you want, but it has to be done not through definition? Is that correct, Gene?
Not through interpretation, but through definition.
Yeah.
I understand.
Can I ask one last question, maybe to, to miss it on, on this form, is if it comes out, if it comes, finishes out, finalizes, and there is a capital gain line on here, do we, what do we, what do we do? Just disregard it? Let people, how do we handle it?
Again, it's my opinion that the state is not mandating a tax on a capital gain. It's just providing a standardized form by which if you tax capital gains, this is how you report it.
Okay.
So I don't think the form dictates what you tax. The form dictates how you report what you tax. And so therefore, I would, I would think that, you know, as I said, there are already cities that aren't doing it, and, and I have, I have a list that was compiled by the Kentucky Society of CPAs that actually goes through city and county as to who's taxing what. And there are, there are actually more than, than I think just Radcliffe and Hopkinsville that aren't doing it. So I certainly would suggest those might be good places to start as to what their ordinances look like, but I don't think that the, the form is going to be a problem. Now, granted, I haven't seen a final draft of the forms. I'm not sure what it says.
Which, five years away.
Probably. If it moves like every other piece of legislation, I assume that that's, that's probably the case.
Pretty fast.
I, I don't believe that, again, because it's on the form, means you have to have a number there to report. It just provides the space if you do actually tax capital gains, because as, as everybody's acknowledged, there are many cities that do.
I just had one comment, not, just a general comment. Each tax issue obviously stands on its own. I think it's rather interesting, and it's not a, a negative comment on anybody, but as a bureaucracy, we worry about forms. It just amazes me how forms seem to guide things. And I know that there's a reason for them and all that. But I will say that I appreciate staff in presenting the issues that you all felt were important to us. And obviously, we have to make that decision, and I appreciate everyone who came before us, obviously. But again, it's a policy decision. And again, I think that, that we should move forward with an ordinance, and whether it's going back to the way it was, I know that's not the right terminology anymore, but I kind of rest mine on 2008. If I had been sitting in this seat, I would not have voted for that at that time. So I couldn't see me doing it now, so. But again, I wanted to recognize staff's comments and appreciate those to give us each side of the issue, and then let us make that policy decision.
Anyone else? Thank you. That's, I really appreciate it, all of you. Thank you so much for coming. Now we have an opportunity for any other policy initiatives that we...
Bob, his wife.
Anyone? All right, that being the case, we'll dismiss and return at 7 o'clock for a regular meeting.